More acreage disturbed. That plan has to go through to soil and water conservation for review and approval, recommendation for approval. And then either your building department, whoever it is, issues them the permit that they need to start construction. And then, once construction starts, then they'll come out once a month and do satisfaction to make sure the plan is being implemented.
Now, when you come out, is that a call? You have to come out?
You have to talk with them to see exactly what it is. Well, I think what they usually do in most communities, they're looking to see how many projects you typically have in a year, and they establish like a price for the whole year, you know, based on what they expect the demand will be. So, like I said, in this community, it's not going to be too much too often, so, um, you know, chances are the price is probably going to be fairly low by getting to meet for them.
Thank you. My last question now, yield to my other colleagues. The 25 percent rebate on stormwater utilities available through MS4, give me an idea of what type of money we're talking about, and we talked about rebate, give me an idea of how much we want.
That's managed by the regional soil district, so how EP does not have access to the actual numbers. However, it's based on what they collect from their community. So, every business and every residence is charged with a stormwater utility fee. And so, 25 percent of that money comes from the community, and you can ask for, to do to pay for specific program and communication projects.
Okay. I'll leave it there. It's vital important that our health and safety chairman, Councilman Will, will be part of the discussion, so he can keep us informed, okay? Thank you.
Yes, Madam Law.
For any easements, then, would the PPA be willing to pay the owners of the properties, or if the city is the owners of the properties whereby you need to utilize for the building of the sewers, would you then pay for those easements?
Well, we're not building any sewers, um, you know, but if you had to install some type of permanent stormwater retention on, um, you know, it really isn't your cost unless you're the developer, okay? So, this really pertains to if somebody comes in and wants to develop something on, you know, green space, or wants to tear something down and build something new there, and that disturbance is one or more acre. So, if that's the situation, then that developer who's going to do that project ends up having to pay the cost for any new stormwater infrastructure to connect to your municipal separate storm sewer system. You know, in some cases, the city will be the developer, consider you're going to build a new fire station, or a new rec center, something like that, you know, then you be the developer, you have to figure that cost into the project.
Okay. Is there any more questions?
I have one question. You talked earlier about best practice. Do you consider, let's say, best practice?
Which communities? Um, I think Cleveland actually has pretty good practices now, you know, like any other community, not everything's perfect, you know, but, um, you know, they have some pretty good systems in place, which you think for the construction, those construction programs, and they really are ramping up the annual discharge program. So, I'm really, I've been impressed with that, with the implementation of those particular programs. And their education program is also phenomenal, so, I mean, they'll, you know, they'll go to the I X Center where there's like a, you know, a guard to show and put up a booth, and they're educating more than just the state, they're educating the whole region, you know, it goes. So, um, you know, I'd say, say, it's very impressive.
In regards to the stretch, you work with who you talk to, would you be willing to come back out and sit down with us a little, and with the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District?
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm like your point person essentially within the Twinsburg office, so if you have any questions about this program, can you need to come out and kind of walk you through this a little bit more carefully and in more detail, I'd be really happy to do that.
Do you work with Northeast Ohio?
Yeah, Jeff Jawett, is your worship partner here? Yep.
So, they, they would be familiar with exactly what's required and what's needed?
Yeah.
They can offer us best?
Well, they're already out here. They're already out here.
Yeah, but they are, but you have, yeah.
They're, they're, um, already, they will provide more of a subsidy, so they're out here and they know the land, the land.
Right, so you'll have to enter into the agreement with them.
Yeah, I understand that, but I think I would look at them first.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
And thank you guys for coming out here and, um, giving us this presentation, and giving us an education on the fact that we were under, we were not in the mode in litigation, prevention of litigation, I might say. And now, we are, and we know where we have to go, and we are looking forward to our law director, um, dealing with you, and dealing with the health and safety area here from the council. And I will also, what I sit in on all the committees, I will be there to see what's going on. Thank you again.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
All righty. So, you want to give a card to Mr. Wheeler, so that he will have it, and also one for me, from the point person and anybody else that?
Yeah.
So, you get? Thank you. Here you go.
Thank you.
Just for, just for the information, for the residents, um, the committee, the health and safety committee consists of, um, Mr. Thomas Wheeler is the chair, um, Mr. Mansell Baker was on the committee, we're going to have to replace him, but at this time, I do have, uh, Councilman Martin sitting on that, uh, health and safety.
It's an honor to be part of and make my contribution.
Well, we're looking forward to big contributions, okay?
Nice to meet you, too.
All right. It's getting, the hour is getting late, and I don't want to keep anybody here after a time. We are still looking at, um, the reports of the council committee. Councilman King, would you like to elaborate on your committee? I think you and Councilman Wheeler did a joint committee. All right, me, we're in his session. What was going to get before you all had a combination of, uh, two?
You want to do it?
We met last, what, Thursday?
Yeah.
So, we looked at the, oh, hey, you mentioned the tobacco legislation, we looked at the no left nerves, we talked about that's the safety, and, um, still waiting on the previous tobacco legislation that was passed.
I will make sure you have it tomorrow, so in your hand.
Okay, that'll be good. I would also like to request, again, that the fiscal commission needs be sent out on email as a reminder, along with the agendas and the minutes from the previous meeting that I was saying we needed yesterday.
Um, I think I, um, I think I mentioned that, I, I, uh, somewhat.
You didn't mention it, but months ago.
I mentioned it, had agenda.
Months ago, I had asked that that email be sent out as a reminder with the agenda and with the minutes. I'd asked for that, yeah, regular council meeting, months ago, that it be sent out email every time.
Well, that is.
So, I'd like to ask that again.
Well, let me, let me give you clarification. As far as sending out an email, that, that information comes from, um, the chair, Sharon Hammerhand, and I will express your request, and she will send it, ask her, she will send it to all of you.
Well, when we, we talked to her before about it, my understanding that she sends it out to the clerk of council for every meeting that they have. So, what I asked for before, you said that?
First of all, let me explain. She only sends out, uh, a email telling us when the date is. I get the date when we, when we make it, and, um, that happens, and I tell at the agenda review, or I say it at the meeting. The last time I told everybody was sitting here, and, um, I'm sorry if you didn't remember or whatever, but I will make sure that Ms. Hammerhand gets to you. Moving right along, are you going to deal with anything else in your committee?
I think that's pretty much the highlights of what we talked about.
All right, that's the end of your presentation. I will, uh, Mr. Wheeler, do you have anything to say? Any, uh, a combination or a, with Mr.?
Just to, uh, all administration, police department had a successful drug bust, uh, over the past week, and confiscated some vehicles, and also some cash, and, uh, they did a great job.
Can you hear him? Anybody here?
Okay, this ain't bad.
That's the thing.
The police department did a great job over, over the last week with a nice sized drug bust, ended up confiscating vehicles, some cash that helped the city out, and, uh, they did a good job.
Right on.
Councilman, uh, Mr. Daniel Martin?
Yeah, briefly, personal appointment committee met, uh, about two, three weeks ago, and we went over the staffing in the city, got about a hundred and seven people working in the city. The staff has been over the last three, four years cutting half. Uh, the mayor's trying to reduce to save money. Uh, some people are working, uh, combined positions, like the human resources and the, uh, executive assistant to the mayor and that kind of thing. Uh, we, we don't really have any significant revenue coming in, so, uh, our most expensive cost is salaries, so, so we're cutting. That's what's been going on. Madam President, that concludes our report of the personal appointment committee.
Thank you very much. I will, um, deal with my committee, which is the finance committee, and I went to the, of course, I sit on the commission, and, um, auditor stated, I always make my sure that mine is in written form. Can everybody hear me back there?
We do.
Okay. Um, auditor stated that the city's bank statements for the month of October were reconciled, and they were expecting that November's would be completed by yesterday. The city's deficit to date is 3.3 million. The auditor's also stated that 51,000 in home funds was spent, and to someone's question, the home funds were spent, and that the general fund paid for money upfront, paid money upfront and was waiting for reimbursement, but that, uh, in order was to get a reimbursement of 45,000, which was if a house, that house that cost so much money, was sold. And that house up on Terrace is $45,000, and it is depending, we're depending on whether, uh, to get monies back into the home fund if that house is sold, and the money was used from the, uh, to rehab and had to be sold first. It also stated, um, I stated to the auditors that there were no home funds, and that the auditors needed to make themselves aware of that fact. They were not aware that, uh, there was no home fund. And my job as the, um, chair of the finance committee is to make sure that I follow the trail of what's going on. So, I knew that the home dollars, uh, had went back because we were not, uh, doing what we were supposed to do with the home funds. They stated that they relied on information, and that they were told by, that they were told by the administration. So, we all know that you have to, and I'm, I was very surprised that, uh, they said they relied on administration, because they are the auditors, and they need to follow, uh, their own procedure and follow the money. I told them that during a meeting I had with the director, Mr. Johnson, council vice president, and myself, we discovered there was no home fund. I was also made aware of the damage to the salt truck. This is the new salt truck we just bought. And I asked if the auditors had put money aside to make, uh, the necessary reparations to the new salt trucks. Auditor said yes. I asked if there was money in the budget for salt, and the auditor stated that in 2016 appropriation, there would be money set aside to purchase salt. I asked the question regarding the red light ticket counter, collection rates, and how it corresponds to the auditor's mandate in place. The auditor stated that as of now, how the law reads, the city must report the total dollar amount of tickets built to the state and the local government money. The city receives from the state would reduce that by a month, but I received from the law director, the state cannot legally touch the city's local government fund money. So, we're looking into how it would relate to what the Ohio revised code said, but if it is the full dollar for dollar, what is being built, the city actually, collection rate is not what is being built, so the city is losing out. The mayor stated that the council chose to retain a lawyer to fight the annexation petition that were submitted and were received. Some of those bills, he also stated, the city has to pay for a special election for the recall of councilmen adding up to, um, $15,000. And also, we also retained a lawyer, and everybody knows that we, why we retained the lawyer was because of the, um, chief of staff to the mayor, and the administration sued, uh, the council. And by us having already a law firm, King and Buckley, um, representing us pro bono to go and look out and see what the options are, to see if we could get money to save our city and keep the city whole, uh, we had that in that agreement, that anything else that came up, we, they would represent us. And having made that clear, uh, we, under the charter, the council had the right to, uh, retain, um, a, um, counselor to, uh, deal with us. And being that the law director said to us that she could not represent us because it was a conflict of interest, and referred us to, uh, outside, um, counseling, and that's what we did. Um, not that she authorizes anything, not that she can deal with anything of that nature, but she said that, uh, she would recommend that we go outside to a counselor, and that she would talk to, um, the director, Mr. Jack Johnson, about putting aside some money. Now, I know he has to put aside a whole lot of money everywhere, so, um, when we get these bills, we'll see what happens. Um, that is the magnitude of my report, and I thank everybody for listening to my report, and being that it was law, okay? Moving right along, let's go to, where am I at? Um, legislation on, um...
Counsel.
I'm sorry? No, we, we moving on now, to legislation, uh, what is the, um...
Resolution. We got legislation resolution number 5615, can you, you call it?
Yeah, resolution number 5615, a resolution to approve and accept the city of East Cleveland's fiscal year 2016 one-year action plan authorizing the mayor to submit said plan to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and upon HUD's approval to accept the fiscal year 2016 action plan budget of an estimated amount of $1,431,157 in community development block grant, CDBG entitlement fund from HUD, requested by the Department of Community Development, sponsored by Council President Barbara J. Thomas.
Councilwoman Thomas, this is sponsored by you, if you'd like.
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, I will sponsor resolution 5615 and move forth with adoption.
I second the motion.
Moving second, any discussion? No discussion, call roll, please.
Councilman King?
Yay.
Councilman Martin?
Yay.
Councilman Wheeler?
Yay.
Councilman Thomas?
Yay.
Number 5615 passed.
We're voting on this.
What?
It's, uh, that emergency, so, uh, are we aware?
Which one, 5615?
5615, number, go ahead.
Right.
Okay.
Put that, some amendments to that?
All right.
Fifty-seven.
So, we all right with that, we can move on?
Yeah, I think I needed to, to...
I think you needed to, you had, uh, there was amendment, um...
That was on 5915. If we voted on this one, and I was looking at it, if it's, if, wait a minute, we can make a motion, but, once we voted on it, it don't go affect us, it's an emergency for thirty days.
Right.
I would like to make a motion that we can reconsider that resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm with, 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 uh, you draw your motion on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we got the vote on it?
Second.
Second. I second.
Okay, call roll.
Councilman King?
Yay.
Councilman Martin?
Yay.
Councilman Wheeler?
Yay.
Council Thomas?
Yay.
Okay, amendment is to amend 5615 to include an emergency.
And fix some of the spelling.
And correct some of the...
It's just fiscal year 2016.
Yeah, fiscal year 2016.
I think that the law director, um, Madam Law Director, do you have all those corrections?
Yeah, in the last paragraph, there was one 2015 as opposed to 2016, and...
Yeah, 2016.
And let it be emergency for the, uh, public health, safety, and welfare?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll add that to the preamble. And then, in paragraph one, two, three, four, five, six, where it says section one, that this council, if I approve and accept the fiscal year 2015, I'll change that to 2016. And I think that's it.
Well, I, uh, well, in the body, it's not in the preamble, in the body, uh, it was articulated that we got three fifths concurring where it should be four fifths.
Oh, yeah.
We make that correction, and there was another correction came up.
On section one.
Well, if it's an emergency, then it would be four fifths.
Oh.
Yeah.
Now, it's four fifths, it needs to be in the body of this stuff. Okay. Uh, I think that covers everything that was pointed out.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
The preamble should just be, but three quarters.
I moved it, if it's all right, Vice President, I moved if we pass resolution 5615 as amended?
Yes. Three quarters.
Moving second, change the note.
Okay.
Councilman King?
Yay.
Councilman Martin?
Yay.
Councilman Wheeler?
Yay.
Council Thomas?
Yay.
Announced that it, that it passed, announced that it passed.
Resolution number 56-15 has passed with changes.
Thank you.
Resolution number 5715.
Resolution number 5715, a resolution requesting the city of East Cleveland's participation in the tax advancement program of the Cuyahoga County Budget Commission to facilitate tax advances in 2016 pursuant to section 321.34 of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring an emergency requested by Finance Director, sponsored by Council President Barbara Thomas.
Councilwoman Thomas, if you'd like.
Um, Mr. Chair, I will, uh, sponsor resolution 5715 and move forth with adoption.
I second the motion, Vice President.
Moving second, no discussion on it?
No.
No discussion? All right, call the roll, please.
Councilman King?
Yay.
Councilman Martin?
Yay.
Council Wheeler?
Yay.
Council Thomas?
Yay.
Fifty-seven fifteen passed.
Resolution 57-15 has passed.
And, uh, Madam, uh, Mr. Chairman, on 5915, the last one, uh, in the body, what I'm looking at right now, it says, an order to amend orders 1015, 2015 permanent budget appropriation as a plan of emergency for public self behavior, public, uh, health and safety and welfare to fund the city operations required by Ohio Fiscal Commission. Now, we discussed that, Madam President, too, we need to make those corrections in the body list before we go on it, the, uh, see if we're going to do a temporary budget from January 1st to March 30th. Is that a different one?
Yeah, that's different.
Okay, okay, just wanted to be sure. Go ahead.
Okay.
All right, go ahead. Somebody have a motion that we...
Ordinance number...
We carry it.
Okay. Ordinance number 59-15, and ordinance to amend ordinance 10-15, the 2015 permanent budget appropriations and declaring an emergency for the public safety, health, and welfare to fund city operations as required by the Ohio Fiscal Commission, requested by Director of Finance, sponsored by Council President Barbara J. Thomas.
Council, please do. Your ordinance.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Chair, I will sponsor, uh, ordinance number 5715 and move forth with adoption. 5915 and move forth with adoption.
Just a question, I'm a little confused here. I'm looking at 5915 on here, and Robert said 5715.
I'm sorry, I mean, I was looking.
So, what are we at, 5915? Is that the one that we, that I raised the issues of this?
Yeah.
All right. All right.
All right.
I'm glad you're on your toes.
No further discussion?
No.
Call roll.
Councilman King?
Yay.
Council Martin?
Yay.
Council Wheeler?
Yay.
Council Thomas?
Yay.
Resolution, ordinance number 59-15 passes.
Okay.
This is what Mike talked about. This is number...
This is 5815, okay, yeah. This is the one that the champ is waiting to get approved, and the mayor.
Don't we got, don't we got to make a motion to put it on the agenda? Put it right on the agenda?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we put resolution 5815 on the...
Wait the 24-hour rule.
Uh, and, and on the agenda, and move the, wait the 24-hour rule, okay?
You know, so, yeah, we got to.
Thank you.
Resolution 5815, can you read that?
You may have to...
Do you want to...
Some corrections?
We have to consider it.
After language, did you work on the language?
Uh, we still got to wait the 24-hour rule.
All right.
Okay, combine the two.
Okay, so, we're adding this, uh, uh, resolution 5815, but we are, uh, I recommend that we... but we are, uh, I recommend that we waive the, um.
24 hour rule.
24 hour rule.
I put the, the, the. Just waive the 24 hour rule first.
Okay, so. So motion to waive the 24 hour rule.
I second.
Second, moving second. Okay, call the roll.
Councilman King?
Yay.
Councilman Wheeler?
Yay.
Council Martin?
Yeah.
Council Thomas?
Yay.
Resolution 58-15 passes.
No, no.
24 hour rule.
Consider.
That's okay.
So we're, now we're adding the resolution. Okay, the language is that, uh, here we go. A resolution made temporary appropriations in various funds for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of East Cleveland for the period between, uh, January 1st and March 31st, 2016, and declaring an emergency in order to secure funding for, uh, police and fire as well as other city services.
Can, can you just say instead of other, just put, uh, as well as, uh, city services, can we?
As well as all city services.
Yeah, that, that would be better.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that's resolution.
I, I, I second that, okay? It's only agenda. It's only agenda, yeah.
Yeah. Waive the 24 hour rule.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we need to make a motion to, take a motion for resolution 5815 to be added to the agenda.
I move that we add resolution 5815 to the agenda with three amendments.
Second, moving second, call the roll.
Councilman King?
Yay.
Council Martin?
Yay.
Council Wheeler?
Yay.
Council Thomas?
Yay.
All right, it was only agenda.
You've heard the, um, checks that she changed, uh, like.
Want to read it again?
Yeah, yeah, read it again, then we'll vote on it, okay?
Change this.
Resolution number 58-15, a resolution to make temporary appropriations in various funds for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of East Cleveland for the period between January 1st, 2016 and.
March 31st.
March 31st, 2016, and declaring an emergency in order to assure funding for police comma as well as, police comma, fire, as well as all.
City services.
City services. Requested by Director Finance, sponsored by Council President Barbara Thomas.
Sponsored by you, Councilor, if you'd like.
I, I will sponsor, uh, what is my, what's the name, 58?
58-15.
5815 and move for its adoption.
I second the motion.
Moving second, any more further discussion? All right, call the roll.
Councilman King?
Yay.
Council Martin?
Yay.
Council Wheeler?
Yay.
Council Thomas?
Okay.
Okay.
But, I'm sorry, that passed.